Mary Ann Warren has the Center Office Building Pool Receptionist. Consideration on accepting a donation of $25 gift cards to McNucks in Big Bunny. Consideration and possible action on the new cannabis committee regulation waiving an application fee for licensing. Consideration and possible action to accept the letter of resignation from full-time dispatcher James Warner. Consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Bruce Grant to Slack as the Big Allen Lake rep. Consideration and possible action on the application filed by Mary Bridget Burns regarding having a block party on Stony Brook Drive. Consideration and possible action on the resignation of Kim Welton. And then I through M is a variety of mutual agreed aid agreements with Corning Towns, Connecticut, old business, new business correspondence, approval administered to Citizens Forum, and then adjourned. So with that, I'd like to have everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd also just like to take a moment of silence for anybody who is dealing with war, specifically in Europe, and also all the environmental and heat waves that have been going on in the southwest and the fires that continue in Canada.
Yes, and especially for the three firefighters out in California that were killed in helicopter crash today fighting the fires.
Public service announcements. Mary Lou, do you have any?
No, I do not.
Chase, any?
I have none, thank you.
Mary, do you?
You're probably going to do it as well, but I just want to thank everybody involved in the PM Mass Challenge. I do some volunteering, and I know that the organizers are very happy with our first responders, police, fire, cert members, and it's a great event, so I just want to thank everybody that was involved. Did you get up and go? I, no, I volunteer with the merchandise. I do not bike. I don't think I could be strapped into anything. I went on Thursday and Friday, but I didn't get up at 5:00 to go, but my husband did. It is an exciting event, and they raise, you know, so much money for, yeah, this is good stuff.
Mary?
Okay, just a reminder about Sturbridge Day at the Wusocks. Robin had something on Facebook, too, so.
So, and there is a competition, so the more tickets that get bought, the more money gets donated to our Little League, and then a town gets a trophy at the end of the year, and lord knows, I like to win, so. So, anybody listening, buy your tickets. And I think at general admission, it's actually sold out, but there are berm seats. We will be sitting down at the berm.
Oh, great. What is the date of that?
Tuesday night, 6:45. Gates open at 5:45. We will be on the field pre-game. Janaye from Planning is singing the National Anthem.
Wow.
So, and for the public, Town Hall offices will be open, but please call ahead because we are allowing people who want to attend the game to go to the game. So, just call ahead if you need to see somebody specifically in Town Hall. I know Finance will be here, there will be someone in the Clerk's office, I think Becky Gendron of Conservation will be here, but not every office may be fully staffed Tuesday night because we do want to show support.
All right. And I have no public service announcement. So, Robin, it goes to you with the DISH license?
Yeah, very briefly on this. So, DISH Network approached us about using one of our water towers for signal up off, and I can't believe I'm having a 50-something brain moment. Fisk, not Fiskill, yeah, Fiskill, up that way. And as you know, with the St. Anne's Tower, we actually have a lease agreement with T-Mobile Sprint. We're renewing that, but we have to go for procurement because that had been under a lease. In speaking with KP Law and the people from DISH, we have the authority to license without doing an actual lease. The biggest difference is that we can end it whenever we want with like a 30-day notice. They don't have to commit as long. We don't have to go through a procurement process. We've certainly not been approached by anybody else to use it. I can license it to two or three people as long as there's room. According to KP Law, I have the authority to do that as a town administrator, to just go ahead and do it, but I wasn't comfortable just going ahead and licensing DISH without going, doing it as a license rather than a lease. Realistically, the procurement process isn't going to be much different, and I don't have people banging down my door, but if you all are comfortable with me exercising that authority to license, I might as well just go that way. It's probably a lot easier.
Do we have a policy on it?
No. So, there's no town policy, and the charter is sort of what Jonathan was, Eichmann was going by, that it gives me the authority to do that. It's a different licensing than, let's say, the licensing authority you have for bars and restaurants and things like that. The use of town property falls under the town administrator, but again, it wasn't something I felt like I should just go arbitrarily doing. I will negotiate a price. Obviously, there'll be a monthly cost. It really works much like a lease, and so we'll look at a monthly cost. In fact, we're looking at the cost now for the new lease for T-Mobile, and I will make it sort of, you know, take that into consideration as we're negotiating that bid. That is, the T-Mobile one is ready to go back out to bid. We will be asking for a little more as the base price on the bid. You'd have to be, you know, someone willing to pay X amount or more, and then whoever comes in with the most would get it, but T-Mobile's equipment is already on that one. Likely, they are going to bid it.
What's the revenue generally generated by something like this?
Right now, the T-Mobile one was getting, we were getting approximately $3,000 a month or $3,500 a month. There was an escalator in it, but that was an old lease, so we certainly will be looking to get a little more than that. The bid will be going out soon. I think our minimum that we're asking, the minimum for the first year, would be $4,000 a month, and we would look to have a 2% or CPI whichever's ever greater escalator.
Questions?
No, it sounds good.
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure you're comfortable with me going the license route. It's just faster, frankly, but, and again, if I had multiple people want to come, it's not exclusive as long as everything fits, and then first come, first served if we run out of space, but we don't have people banging down our door for these things. We will have to make sure any tower complies with height restrictions and anything above the tower, all that stuff. Thank you. That's all from me.
Okay. We are on to action items, then. Consideration and possible action to confirm the appointment of Bailey Applegate to the Sturbridge Cable Advisory Committee for a term to expire August 7, 2026. Bailey, how are you doing? You want to come on up?
Not that we always hire people that I had in school, but I had Bailey in third grade.
So, Bailey, why do you want to join the Cable Advisory Committee?
Honestly, because we've had a lot of problems with cable in our neighborhood. Like, we live at the end of the neighborhood, and when we switched to HD, the HD didn't work, so the cable company had to put a bunch of signal boosters, and we still get choppy signals sometimes for ages. Right now, we're paying for like a gigabyte, but we're only getting like 300 megabytes, which, not, not exactly a gigabyte. I remember when we turned in the cable box and they gave you problems, they gave us problems with that. You know, we had to do it in person, we had to fill out a bunch of paperwork, they tried getting us for like back fees and stuff. It was, it was unpleasant experience. I feel like first charter and then it became Spectrum was just kind of like terrible. I knew people on the other side of town who were able to use, what is it? I think it was Verizon over by the dump, and they were like, oh, yeah, we don't deal with Charter or Spectrum, we've got someone else we can do, and it's like, oh, cool, we don't have that.
Well, makes sense to me. Any questions, comments?
Have you read the agreement we're closing up on, well, near the end of?
Um, do you mean like the current?
The current one that expires.
I have not read up on that. I didn't know it was available.
Anything's available, but it's interesting. You know, there's a lot of people that think, you know, Spectrum is TV, but a lot of people are confusing it with internet, you know, and they're two separate things. I mean, Spectrum does have internet, but the towns, Spectrum is cable TV.
That's the only part that's up for change?
That's the only agreement we have with Spectrum.
So, why is Spectrum internet only available?
That's totally separate on people's own part.
What do you mean on people's own part?
Like, we were going to go with it, we would have had to have an electrician come in and wire upstairs and stuff, so.
You mean?
The agreement that Sturbridge has with Spectrum is for cable TV.
Just cable TV? Well, we stopped using the cable TV because it was so crappy, so.
Well, there's not much on to watch anyways.
Yeah, I don't really watch it anymore.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other thoughts, questions?
What about cable, or not cable, Charter, I keep saying Charter, Spectrum, phone? Is that different from?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's part of their cable. I think that's just their.
Yeah.
So, so, um, the TV, the internet, and the phone all use different infrastructure, then?
No.
No.
It's all, it's all through cable, but the, but this committee deals with, addresses the actual television part of cable, if that makes any sense.
Yeah.
The problem with trying to get another company in, they would have to buy all the equipment that's poles and everything that's in place now, and no one, no other company is willing to.
What do you mean by poles?
You know, like telephone poles?
Telephone poles, so.
And the Y is all.
Charter owns the telephone poles?
Infrastructure.
So, just like we just talked about how DISH is going to go onto the water tower and do an installation?
Yeah.
All of those poles have different equipment that people have on them.
Yeah, but the telephone poles, that's not owned by Charter, right?
I assume their national grid leaves.
The poles master grid. They leave space on them, and then their equipment, their lines, the big, heavy, thick lines, all the fiber optic and all that is theirs. They would pay, so whatever your local cable company is in some town, it might be Verizon and Cox that you could choose from. Here, it just happens to be this one. I think what you kind of have to think about is like you unbundled, you just kept internet in your home and you got rid of the cable?
Yeah.
Same thing, we're unbundled, if you will. We have the cable, we're talking, we use the cable service. Our telephones are not.
But if they all use the same cable, they're all the one, there's not like a separate, um.
But Charter owns the line.
Right.
So, a new cable company would have to come in and string all these poles and have an agreement with Verizon and National Grid. It's really complicated, and it's a real headache. So, no company wants to bid against Charter, they kind of have the market cornered.
Like that in any town, really?
Yeah.
That's why you don't see cable companies change, there's not much competition. When you move into a town, you kind of get stuck with what's there, and you know it's pretty much not going to. You're lucky if you can get Verizon and Cox to choose from.
If we were in more of a suburban area, that's where they tend to have more options. You know, like if we were in the Boston Belt or whatever, we're still a small town, and not many small towns have a lot of options.
That's true. Well, if I were on the Cable Advisory, we'd be talking about this with them, right?
Right. How many do we have on it already?
Four on it, with five positions.
Four. There's, yeah, there's definitely one open, there's five, but there's four.
Four, right. Okay, so.
It said there was one open on the.
Yeah, there's one open, so we're missing the fifth, and then Bruce's.
Is there still one open with this appointment?
No, this will fill the last one. This will fill the last one, yeah.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Otherwise, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to appoint Bailey Applegate to the Sturbridge Cable Advisory Committee for a term to expire August 7, 2026.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? The ayes have it. Thanks, Bailey.
Thank you.
All right.
And you have to stop by and get sworn in with Lynn.
The town clerk.
The town clerk at some point, so.
I'll send you a letter as well.
Yeah, Michelle, back to Michelle. She's got to go, she knows all the tricks.
Yeah, you're fine.
Yeah, you all said, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you too.
Thank you.
All right. So, on to action item B, consideration and possible action to confirm the appointment of Carrie Ann Warren as the Center Office Building Pool Receptionist and Administrative Assistant effective April 21, 2023 at the hourly rate of 22.22.
So, I'm excited to present Carrie Ann to you. Unfortunately, she was on vacation this week, and so we said, good, get your vacation out of the way, because then you're not leaving here. I'm really excited about her background. We put a committee together of Michelle, Jean, and Terri, who reviewed the resumes. Actually, Michelle and I reviewed the initial resumes. We narrowed down, and with Jean's input on to, what, seven?
There was like seven or eight, and then we interviewed.
Yep, so they interviewed three to present to me, and with a recommendation leading in, and I supported that recommendation. I think Carrie is a tremendous addition. She, we had some people with municipal experience that, we had one fine candidate with some municipal experience that would have had a little less of a learning curve on the content of the job, but Carrie really, I think, has the personality and dynamic and understanding and experience to handle some of the challenges that are going to come with working for multiple departments. She does have good software and basic computer skills, so she'll be able to ramp up on Munis very comfortably. She's ready to start training on a seller right away. She was working at UMass for a while. She had a small hiatus, she had raised a family, so she is, I think she's just a phenomenal candidate. I really enjoyed her when I interviewed her. She came in to do her paperwork pending this and took a tour already and has visited and said hello to people, and very, very eager, great attitude, great personality, and I think understands, like I said, the challenges that the position is. I was very honest with her coming into it about the position, that there's been mixed discussion about it, but that it had the support of the town, and she is happy to take on that challenge. We've started working on office space over there for whoever the candidate would be, and so I ask for the board's consideration of Carrie.
Any questions, thoughts, concerns?
No, I just, we'll probably get a few things on Facebook about booking pool time. Just struck me as odd.
About what?
Booking pool time.
So, office.
Building pool receptionists, yes, somebody will bring up the pools, yes.
We have a receptionist for the pool. She's taking it out at the school.
I'll take 10 to run.
Yes.
Any other jokes?
Have a slow day.
You got to break it up a little bit.
All right.
Where is she going exactly, physically?
Conservation has moved upstairs next to Terri, and she's going where Conservation was because that's the sort of the catch-all for people. We wanted, we didn't want to have it where people were still going to Cindy because they didn't know who they were supposed to go to, for example. So, she's going there, the back part of that will be a little meeting space where Mike, because they moved up to where Mike Struppa was, Mike can meet there and keep his files there. Mike also will have private office space accessible here in either the Julian Room or the Minuteman Room if he needs the space. Our tree warden was over there, he's actually out of DPW, so he's going to go over to DPW, but that will be a little space down there. Or if, for example, you know, we had a case the other day where somebody went upstairs very angry to Annie, who was alone upstairs, and it was kind of an awkward situation. Now, we have enough space there that if it's one of those situations and Carrie sort of deems that maybe Annie would, Annie, for example, or anybody would want to come downstairs, there's a space now in the back where that person could meet in a more, a little busier environment, because it can be a little isolated on the second floor up there sometimes. So, that space will have a multipurpose. We're moving the copier down there so that when she assists in making copies and whatnot, she doesn't have to leave the post. The big key was that somebody would be there at 8:00 in the morning to start catching the public if the people who are in the offices are out in the field or doing whatever they need to be doing.
Does Conservation have as much room as they did before?
They have as much, actually. We offered them more. I offered to, we were actually going to move Terri downstairs and share the space with Carrie and give him the back part of it because he doesn't really have a ton of traffic in and out. And, but they chose, we were going to give them two offices, so Erin and Becky could have her own, and they chose to, they preferred to keep one office, and then Terri is offering to let them keep their files if they want in his office.
Because I just know they do tend to have a lot of files compared to other.
They went up in the actual where the copier was.
Yeah, so a lot of the files moved to where the copier was instead of in Terri's office, but Terri had, yeah, Terri had offered. But we did offer them two offices, private office for each, and even offered to kind of cut out a wall in between, but they prefer to stay in the same office.
It's actually, I mean, I was up there, it looks like a nice space.
Yeah, we rearranged some of the furniture, they, yeah, so. We've been able to do it at a minimal cost with furniture. Michelle has taken the lead with Robin on, you know, the furniture and whatnot, designing the office space.
I got a lot of supplies from other departments.
Yeah, we recruited other departments to donate startup supplies, so we didn't go buy things we don't need. And, and this, so the position will report to Michelle, and as I said, Michelle, the, oh, the committee, the interview committee was Michelle, Jean, and Terri. Jean Boobon and Terri.
All right. Do we have any other questions or comments? Otherwise, a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Carrie Ann Warner as the Center Office Building Pool Receptionist and Administrative Assistant effective August 21, 2023 at the hourly rate of $22.22.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor? All right. The ayes have it. Moving on to action item C, consideration and possible action accepting a donation of two $25 gift cards to McNucks, Big Bunny Market and Town, $25 gift cards to Shaw's Market from the Federated Church of Sturbridge and Fistale. Well, thank you, thank them for that, first of all. Any comments?
It's to the town, too, the way it's written?
Yes.
Or, yes.
I think the town was.
It's typically the town as the recipient effective.
I think what happened was is that they put the town in front of the 25, and it shouldn't be there, and it's basically a 25 to McNucks and a 25 to Shaw's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And how do we handle these?
As far as?
No, as one to accept it. I'm just wondering, you know, once we accept it, how, do we just keep it and not buy anything, or do we have a party, or?
Well, I think we let our fair staff figure out what they need to do.
Yeah, usually. I think, yeah, I think Leslie uses them for people who might need something.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. We should have said two, not town. Yeah, two, that's what we would use, two. But if someone needs food or if the senior senator is doing an event or something like that, so we would go back to the public. We won't have a party.
Okay.
We found our own parties. No, no, Massachusetts does not, actually, well, the gift card, it might be a little different, but Massachusetts does not allow us to buy food for staff by law.
Well, neither that has a may. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept the donation of two $25 gift cards from McNucks slash Big Bunny, and $25 gift card to Shaw's Market from the Federated Church of Sturbridge and Fistale.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? The ayes have it. All right. Moving on to action item D, consideration and possible action on the Cannabis Committee new regulation waiving the application fee for cannabis licensing under the new definition of cannabis retailers as an equity business.
Yes, so, it was supposed to, we, every community before July 1st was to, supposed to provide some relief for any new cannabis business that might want to come in. Now, we don't have any more that can come in because we've already used our licenses up. We have not been quick, nor have most other communities been too quick to do it because the law has been in flux for the past year, what is going to apply, what is not going to apply, what's retroactive, what is not retroactive. In speaking with Nicole from KP, who is our lead on all things cannabis, well, I shouldn't say that. She is our lead on all regulations in cannabis. She suggested that we, the one part that was going to stand regardless of what challenges to the law were, were that they are considering it an equity business, which means that it may be likely to be owned by minority or women or whatever else, and therefore should get some type of relief to encourage and support that. One of the things she recommended is waiving a future application fee for, or waiving an application fee in the future if anybody was ever applying down the road for a cannabis license. She said that would comply with the spirit of the law. It doesn't impact anybody currently now, but it, I think our application fee was $300, and basically, we would be waiving that fee if anybody came along, and it would keep us in compliance.
Okay. I mean, if you're starting a cannabis entity, I don't think $300 is really changing the bottom line in any way, shape, or form, but I'm fine with it. What's the rest of the board think?
I agree with you, but if it keeps us in compliance, probably.
Right. Is there a printout on this?
No, there isn't.
No. And this, this not because the, is, they have, we had, there was an hour webinar today on this with pretty much every community. There is a major complication right now going on with the Cannabis Commission with host community agreements and everything else, and this came up in passing with Nicole, who said to me, the town needs to take a position on something to, on the equity portion. And then the remainder, I will be briefing you in executive session within the next couple months on your involved aspects of this.
But to Mary's point, and I don't think it changes my willingness to take a vote on this myself, but it is a little opaque to just sort of get a regulatory request without kind of having any.
Background.
Yeah. I mean.
It's kind of ridiculous. Yeah, I can hold and give you more, I mean, that's fine.
If, I mean, is it, are they telling us that this, if we have this vote, we will be in compliance?
Yes.
Are we going to be out of compliance if we don't have this vote?
We're out of compliance since July 1st. We were out of compliance, as was every other.
Didn't they get written notice about this?
No. Well, no, the legislation got passed, so technically, we're supposed to.
So, if we are, if this puts us in compliance, and we know there are new cannabis places coming in, I think we just take a vote. I would suggest we approve it, and then when we come back to discuss future issues with the host community agreements in cannabis, which we are going to be doing, we can just remember that if we have to revisit this for some reason again.
Yes, because this really impacts nobody right now.
Yeah. All right. Well, just, do I, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the possible action on the Cannabis Committee new regulation of waiving the application fee for cannabis licensing under the new definition of cannabis retailers as an equity business.
I second it.
All right. All those in favor? All right. Moving on to action item E, consideration and possible action to accept the letter resignation from full-time dispatcher James Warner effective July 24, 2023.
Okay, and there is a letter from the chief recommending acceptance, and also, he, Mr. Warner talks about how much he learned and appreciative of his time here. We don't want to think people are leaving on bad terms.
Hang on. Yeah, no, we appreciate his service. Does anybody else have a comment or do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the letter of resignation from full-time dispatcher James Warner effective July 21, 2023, and thank him for his service.
I think it was the 24th, not the 21st.
Oh.
Same.
It's because the 21st is my birthday.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor? The ayes have it. All right. Consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Bruce Grant to the Sturbridge Lakes Advisory Committee as the Big Allen Lake representative for a term to expire July 17, 2025. Comments, thoughts? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Bruce Grant to the Sturbridge Lakes Advisory Committee as the Big Allen Lake representative for a term to expire July 17, 2025.
I think you meant to say the 21st.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Who's the board's rep?
I believe it's Maria.
The board of select.
No, I believe.
The board of select.
I believe the board of selectmen rep is myself, I believe.
Yeah. No, I think that's, that's my reflection as well. Okay, moving on to Action Item G, consideration and possible action on an application filed by Mary Bridget Burns of 13 Stony Brook Drive, Sturbridge, to allow Stony Brook Drive to be blocked off on September 9th, 2023, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. and for a block party. And the chief was comfortable with it.
She just couldn't be here tonight, but he was very comfortable with it.
Well, considering where it is, they don't get any traffic.
Not messing anybody up. They just for safety.
Yeah, we've, you know, approved it before. Plus, you know, there could be one neighbor that wouldn't like it.
So she goes through the formalities and makes sure it's.
Yeah. So, all right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the application filed by Mary Bridget Burns, 13 Stony Brook Drive, Sturbridge, to allow Stony Brook Drive to be blocked off on September 9th, 2023, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Second.
All those in favor?
I want to thank Michelle for the application. We didn't really have a formal application for block party, and she worked on it. She said she's going to go back and still work on it, but it's.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Michelle is putting and coordinating all these types of applications, formalizing the license application process, so this has been part of her.
New job.
Increased role. I actually found one for a road race, too, that I'm going to. Oh, she's got a road race, so she's formalizing all of these things that have been sort of there, but not there. So it just protects the town, too, because it is a common.
Creates a structure.
Yep.
No, thank you, Michelle, for all your hard work. All right, going on to Action Item H, consideration and possible action to accept the letter of resignation from Kim Welton, DPW, effective July 28th, 2023.
Kim got cherry picked by Veolia.
No.
We got, so she got stolen by our own. But we'd like to thank her. She's, she's, she's been great.
Is she going to stay at the Veolia in Sturbridge?
I believe she's staying with us, yes.
Oh, wow. Good.
All right, so do we have a motion?
Hey, I make a motion to accept the letter of resignation from Kim, Kim Welton, Department of Public Works, effective July 28th, 2023.
All right.
Can you imagine she better work for Shane than Heather?
I'm not getting into that.
I don't think I'm going to go into that.
I would sit out any further comment.
It's inside. It's got to be something else. It's inside.
So, all right, so for these next groups, so Action Items I, J.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Sorry, I thought we already did it. All those in favor?
I second it.
I did, yeah.
I just have, is she the only female down at the DPW?
Yeah, ironically outside of our director and April, yes. She is the only person in that division that was, is female, yep.
She's good. She came when a tree in a storm got.
Yeah, she's very good. She's very good.
Blocked the road and everything.
So we will, we will miss her. She's very good. She's very efficient.
Yeah, I've heard that from several people.
Yep, she works very hard.
Great. All right, so moving on appropriately now to Action Items I, J, K, and L. Unless anybody has a comment or wants to discuss them, I was just going to make a block motion to approve each of them. Is that fine with everybody?
I just have a question on them in general.
Sure.
Do we have to have signed mutual aid agreements to provide and request mutual aid?
We should. You, you could call them in, but if there was ever an incident where a chain of command, a structure, an injured on duty came into play, and you don't have a signed agreement, you could have problems. So it's just, I mean, if we had to call somebody who we happen not to have.
I was just curious.
Somebody would show up, but it is better, and that's one of the reasons, primarily because of 84.
Yep.
And how much we, but if we ever needed somebody to come in for a highway disaster, for example, to have these, it's just, it's just better for liability for the community.
So we haven't had these over the years?
I don't believe we've had these. These are new.
These are new with Connecticut.
These are new ones with Connecticut. We have South Bridge.
South Bridge and our surrounding.
Yeah, it's a little more complicated with, because state laws vary and how injured on duty works and arbitration, and all those things work differently.
So out of curiosity, how did this come about? Did we reach out to them, or did they reach out to us requesting?
I think the chief, I think our chief, we have initiated these because of the concerns about 84 and the amount of traffic coming through 84 and the types of accidents that can happen. He worked with KP. We sent these through KP for review.
Oh, so they're all the same?
They're all the same. They're all the same, just with the variations for each town.
Okay.
Yeah, so we will have them unredlined for final signature, but the red lines have come through KP with the changes.
Okay. Great. So I, I'm going to move that we sign the mutual aid agreement between the Sturbridge Fire Department and the Town of Union, Connecticut, the Town of Stafford, Connecticut, the Town of Thompson, Connecticut, and the Town of Woodstock, Connecticut.
Second.
All those in favor? All right. All right, on to Action Item M, consideration and possible action to authorize the chair to execute the contract with Jim Baird, Wastewater Services, Inc., for the leachate, collection, transport, and disposal.
I believe you should have a memo on that from, is there any?
It's not a memo. We have the actual.
Hen should have the contract in there, yeah.
Is that who we have now, or is this a new?
I believe that is who we currently have, but we did put it out to bid. It had not been put out to bid in a very long time. Yeah, yep, here's the contract. Here's the signature page.
And how does the price compare to what we have now?
I believe it's on par. It had gone up, and we had.
This one increases.
Yeah, and so I believe this was not, this was within what we expected at this point. There have been some issues with those accounts getting overspent, and part of ensuring that that does not happen is we went up to bid and had a contract where our numbers were solidified, and we could more properly budget.
And so you're saying they were overbid because the pricing was being done on an ad hoc basis, sort of?
Yeah, I'm not sure there was a whole lot of oversight of, of the pricing, just because it had not gone out to bid. It was whatever it had been all along, whatever it went up to, because we have to do it.
Yeah.
And it just needed formalization and to comply.
Yeah, I think the contract, so.
That's a petition.
Yeah.
That was a disposal, right? Our.
I have to.
Yeah, because these prices are lower than this, which is always good.
That's the direction you're looking for, right?
Yes, that's what we were.
All right, so do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we authorize the chair to execute the contract with Jim Baird, Wastewater Services, Inc., for the leachate, collection, transport, and disposal.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? The ayes have it. I lost my agenda. I don't even know that's possible.
Want mine?
Yeah, go ahead. Because I can't.
There you go.
I don't even know that's, it doesn't even seem possible. All right, we're moving on to old business. Mary Lou, any old business?
No.
Mr. Chase?
I do, actually. Happy to report that the football jamboree that we had drafted a letter and signed is happening on August 19th and 20th. It's expected to bring in over $50,000 for the football program in this town. They were able to buy all new cheerleader uniforms, they're buying new cheerleader pom-poms, football safety equipment, and it's a good thing. So it's at the high school on August 19th and 20th.
Great. Very good. Saturday, Sunday?
Saturday, Sunday, yep.
All right. Mary, any old?
Um, yeah, something we've all wanted, you wouldn't know, all of us, I think. I want to thank you for pursuing to get a sign on one of the triangles, a welcome to Sturbridge, and just wondering what is the next step to advance that.
So you should have, I'm hoping, at the second August meeting, if not the first September meeting, a few drafts of signs to take a look at. Jean Buban is working with the person who did the, the Wayfair signs that she's got, those, you know, the signage that we have along. So she's working with the designer who did those, and you should have several to choose from. It will be the board's decision on which direction to go, and then we will work with DOT on permitting and the breakaway and all of the logistics, how we're going to set it up. Is it going to be two? I mean, I would love to have it from both angles where you could see it both directions, and, but it will come in front of the board, but we're in design phase now.
Excellent, with some landscaping around, I assume.
Yep.
Nice.
Low ground.
Mary, any old business?
Yes. So many places they put plantings in, and it covers whatever they put it in front of. Have we had many applicants for the open school position?
Yeah, I'm waiting to hear back. She emailed me asking to me today when it was going to be posted, so I meant to tell you, you need to talk to each other. So, yes, we've got to get Deb and Michelle in touch with each other for, for that. She, Deb did indicate she's had one person who reached out who is showing some interest, so we just have to get Deb and Michelle together to make sure they're on the same page with the posting, and we will go.
Oh, so it hasn't been posted?
Has not been posted, yep.
Oh, okay.
I think we have, and then we have a month it has to be, this 30-day window on that that has to be up, I think.
You know, Rob, when you do your town administrator updates, I think one thing that would be helpful for all of us is to have you remind us what physicians are open in case we can mouth them anyway.
Sure.
Just because sometimes every day.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
No, no, it's, it's good, though, just because then people hear it, and now it's better.
Yeah, we're mouthed.
Yeah.
On that note, we do have posted the Disabilities Commission ID. Several people who have some type of diagnosed disability do sit on the commission, so if there are people out there that you know of, I believe I have, I have one member on it who is non-disabled, and I, and I do need some people who are, or a family member, so if they have a disabled child, that would count, so, yeah, just keep your ears open.
No, it's good. That's exactly what I was thinking of, right? Okay, Mary, anything else?
No, that's all I had.
And I have no old business. All right, new business, Mary Blanchard.
I already spoke to Robin about it, the tower truck, it's out of commission.
Okay. All right.
She's going to look into it.
All right, so that new business will probably become old business.
Hopefully.
Yeah. All right, Mary Dowling? Mr. Chase?
Actually, it's kind of older, but the parking lot that we signed a contract under on Route 20, is it going to be starting soon?
Just today, you just signed the, the construction contract. We had done the engineering, construction contract got signed today. We had the bids in a couple weeks ago. You should start to see activity within weeks.
Awesome. Yeah, because I think Heather had said the fall was pretty much when it was really done.
Yep.
So that's good.
Very exciting news on that.
Yeah, that's very good. Ms. Mary Lou? All right, great. All right, so we correspondents, I don't think we had any, did we?
No. Nobody writes to us.
Nobody writes to us. Nobody writes to me. Well, sometimes I think people write to me. Believe me.
People write to me, just not in this capacity.
Be happy that I'm writing to you.
All right. All right, then on to the approval of minutes, going back to the first to the last set, which was July 17th, 2023. Anybody have any edits?
So I'll make a motion to approve minutes of July 17th, 2023, as written.
Okay. All those in favor? The ayes have it. All right, moving to the, I believe it would be the, the, September 6th, no, September 6th, 2022 meeting. So I didn't have anything. Mary, or Mary, did you have any?
When, are we on September 6th?
Yeah, September 6th, the one where we were the, we're the three there.
Yes. I just have a typo, Michelle. On the second page, Selectman Dowling stated it would help Public House if they have the full, to have the full support, just cross out one of the fulls, if they had the full support of the board of selectmen.
September 6th, Public House, the discussion.